Like to call the meeting order for August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, just start with the flag.
Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Warrant bills assigned. Approve the agenda.
Make a motion we approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Our minutes on the last meeting. I'll make a motion we approve the minutes of August second and August ninth.
Seconded. Ben seconded.
All in favor?
I typically don't do the, uh...
No, you don't.
No. Okay, what do we got here? Town administrator weekly update.
All right, first is to let you know that the firefighter Doug Ackroyd has officially accepted the position that you offered him last week, so we are pleased to add him to our team. He's gonna be starting, looks like, in about two weeks. He's worked out everything, all the paperwork with the treasurer, fire chief, and we're very excited to have him, had signed letters tonight that we'll send out to the other applicants, but Doug Ackroyd is our new employee.
I'm sorry, when did he start?
He'll start in about, in about two weeks.
Yeah, I met him the other day there.
He's done, I guess, a per diem shift here and there, so he's just getting familiar.
Yep.
Next is regarding the Conservation and Forest Committee. As you saw from the emails that went around, we took the time to spell it all out, clarify who is on the committee based on their expiration dates. There are three openings on that committee. I'm hoping that one of them is gonna get filled by an individual that's been attending, so I'm waiting to hear from him and we'll appoint him right away, but we need to get some committee members so that they can move forward with the plans as you laid out, but they've received the email and everybody knows where we're at with it.
So, so how many are on it now?
There's seven with the forester.
So, three vacant, so there are four active.
Correct.
I see, okay. Thank you.
The next is just an update, and Tom may wanna take over, that we had our first investment rollover today. It actually happens tomorrow. It's our first thirty-day T-bill came due. We turned it over to ninety days after the conference call that we had today. The rate for the ninety days was five point four three.
Three-four.
Five point three-four. He wasn't gonna get it all, but it was a million-dollar T-bill and we got fifty-eight hundred dollars in interest in that short amount of time.
Just in thirty, just in thirty days.
Just in thirty days. So, Tom's leading us. We're gonna, so we're gonna have it where they're always thirty, sixty, or ninety. So essentially, as a thirty, you got turnover to ninety, so that sixty day one moves up and so forth, and we'll just keep, keep doing it, so. And you'll let us know if you hear from the bank regarding the couple of questions you had. I'm guessing he'll reply to you directly?
Yes, yes, and, and we also reviewed with the treasurer how she can go about getting access to the Wisdom Tree variable rate or floating rate treasury note fund, which is a fund that she has a million dollars in it and she can get access to it within three to five days. Immediate access, and that's earning five point three percent. So, so she understands now if there's any kind of emergency, how to get at cash.
Reviewed with the bank, which I thought was, was good, I mean, for, for everybody, especially the, you know, the residents' peace of mind for everybody involved, that some processes that they'll put in place, that, you know, that the deposits will go just from there to our direct partner's account. Anything outside of that needs, you know, two signatures, and so we put a lot of safety protocols in there as well, so. It's good, it's good conversation. Next is, I know we talked a little bit about the stabilization, but it, I just wanna say it one more time. If you haven't, if you haven't heard, the state of Maine has done away with the stabilization. It's a one-and-done, so the tax bills that we have this year will be based on last year's stabilization rate. After next year, you go to your full assessment at whatever the rate may be. They are putting a program in place. It essentially is a loan program, but it doesn't have to be paid back unless the property is sold or gets turned into, goes into like a probate. So, they're giving the discount through what, a loan, a tax loan process, uh, program. The Maine Revenue Service.
This is the stabilization?
This is the stabilization.
And it's a loan, so somebody gets a reduction in their taxes and...
The loan goes against the property.
So they're putting a lien on the property?
Yes, they're putting an interest in it, yes.
And how does that get released?
Pay it off.
Or when you sell the house.
But you only have to pay it off if it, if the property owner passes away and it would go, it would get attached to the estate, or if you sell the property, it has to be paid off.
So, the, the thought was, at least my thought, was that this was a reduction in an individual's tax obligation and that they, it would be a reduction as opposed to an advance or a loan. They, they have to repay.
Yeah, they have to repay.
So is this what they did because they didn't have any money?
This is, uh...
No, I'm, I'm trying to be serious here. I mean, they, they didn't have any, they never funded it, so they made a loan. That's unbelievable.
Well, what they did is they screwed in the first place. They thought they had a great idea, they knew they couldn't fund.
Yeah.
Instead of, you know, like we talked before about this whole thing was none of it made sense in the first place because, you know, when you have, you know, sixty-five and older, not everybody's poor at sixty-five and older, there's millionaires. Their gonna, their taxes are gonna get locked down at whatever, but instead of doing, say, okay, well, if you're sixty-five and older, you know, give them some sort of a thing to fill out to make them eligible for the lockdown.
If you gotta lien on your property, which is...
Well, it's a mortgage, it's not a lien.
Well, my point is, when you go to get, when you go to get a mortgage, the bank has to give the, the, the state the, the first order of claim on the mortgage. On the value, on the, on the property.
They're calling it a state property.
Will a bank do that?
Listen, it's a state property tax deferment program. So the state of Maine property tax deferment program is a lifeline loan program that can cover the annual property taxes of those sixty-five and older who are permanently disabled or cannot pay the taxes on their own. The loan only requires repayment once the property is sold or becomes part of an estate.
My, my point is, is if they issue a mortgage, a bank does, and let's say they issue it for a hundred thousand dollars and they sell the property for a hundred thousand dollars, in a, in a foreclosure. The bank is, and there was a five thousand dollar loan from the state, the bank is only gonna get ninety-five thousand dollars. I don't think they're gonna, I, I, I think...
Sounds like another bad idea.
Yeah. Do you thi, are we gonna notify people of this?
Well, we've been, I mean, our, you know, every other customer in my window wants to know if they can re-sign up for the stabilization, and we're giving them, we've got handouts on it from the state that's provided, and, you know, we're handing them out and going over with them, and...
It's just that these people should understand there's gonna be a lien on their...
I'm sure they'll have to sign something. I don't think it's gonna be as popular as, you know, the stabilization.
Maybe that's why...
You're right, a majority of the people...
I just wanna make sure that we do our best to make sure people understand what's happening here.
So applications are supposed to be available November first for this, so once we, they haven't even created them yet. So once they get them, we'll make sure we have enough documentation to help educate our seniors.
All right.
Good?
I'll go away on that.
Zoning Board of Appeals is one of the committees that we have, we did not reappoint. We haven't had any val, uh, any appointments on the zoning board for a little over a year now. Just a heads up that I'm gonna be advertising, it's a committee we need to have filled, and it does look like we may have some items coming down.
Oh, really?
Yes. So, um, we'll reach out to the people that were last on it and see if they're interested, but zoning board of appeals, which essentially hears any variance requests or hears permits, concerns, or anybody that has, that questions a permit, there's a variety of things that can go before the zoning board.
Are there any qualifications an individual should have to be on that?
I mean, fair and unbiased are the first things that come to mind.
Never asked for anything before, any, look, I mean...
I mean, we want somebody that's, you know, fair and unbiased and just can just, you know, understanding any of the zoning is certainly helpful.
And how many members are, well, I guess that's the, the key. How many members are there?
I believe it's a seven-member board. Five and two alternates, if I recall. And we have some good people that were on it last time around that, you know, so gonna reach out to them, but...
Yeah, the nice thing about that committee is, is, uh...
I mean, they meet once, I mean, I think in the last ten years, they've met twice.
Yeah, they don't meet often, so. Problem is, they also lose interest because they haven't been called.
Because they don't meet, right.
Will, will, will they have access to legal counsel?
Not normally.
Because as I understand, if someone appeals a zoning board decision, you have to, or if, if, if they get denied or have an issue with the zoning, with a, a planning board decision...
Well, not planning board. So planning board can only go to Superior Court.
That's where I was getting.
Right, so if they're appealing a planning board decision, they have to go to Supreme Court, Superior Court, Supreme Court. If they are, if they want a variance, they can't meet...
It's just a variance.
Well, if they can't, if they want a variance for building, that's one reason they can go before them. The other reason is if they, they can question a code, a permit, a building permit within so many days. It's in the zoning ordinance.
Okay, that's fine.
I don't have it memorized, but just those two things.
I thought one of those, that, that we did have a town lawyer at one of those.
Well, I mean, it... I think that would be wise.
I mean, it always depends. I mean, obviously, if they bring counsel, the town's gonna bring counsel, but it depends. I mean, if it's a simple variance, they can't meet, somebody's stuck back from the road, they may not need them, so.
Okay.
Keep an eye on it.
Right, depends on the situation. All right, so there are five Wednesdays in August.
Um, so we're...
Thinking that we might skip next week and meet back at the end of the month on the Thursday?
Typically, they take that week off because of a fair...
Yep, we have.
You wanna put that on the, on the website there?
Oh, I know people.
You know people.
Get that out there for you. So there'll be no meeting on the twenty-third, right, seven and six to thirteen, all right. So, next we need to make a plan. We need to figure out how the board, as a group, is going to help the town administrator enforce the department heads, elected and appointed, the issue that we're having with vendors. We have vendors that are being called in to do work. Right now, we're dealing with four different situations in one week. Last, last two weeks, we'll say, that they're called in by a department head to do work of some sort. They don't have liability insurance and they don't have either proof of working compensation or the exemption is required by the state. There's not one department. These are, I think we have three different departments involved in the last two weeks. So the insurance is something that, you know, hopefully we can get fairly quickly, but the, the issue with workers' comp, and the treasurer and I had a conversation about this today, is, you know, because at this point, you know, we're holding checks waiting for this determination letter from the state, so I called Maine Municipal and said, listen, you know, A, should we, can we legally be holding these checks, and B, um...
Legally, you weren't supposed to hire them in the first place.
Well, right, and that's what they're saying, you get a better handle on your department head, to be honest with you.
I, I think you have to pay them.
You have to pay them.
Yeah.
So what happens is when we have our workers' compensation audit...
We'll, we'll, we'll end up having to cover the cost of that work.
Right, that, whatever we paid out, it gets added as an employee wage, and it's making our rates go up.
Do we get it back if we can prove, if we get the slip?
No, because the audit, by then, the audit said, it's whatever month of the year.
The problem is, we're engaging people, services, that haven't been, there's, the, the proper appointment documents have not been received. And they should not be appointed until they are.
Well, we've got to do...
And it, I, I was go, we've been, I, I, I think this falls into the same category as purchasing. Typically, there are, there, there are a series of things that you do when you're gonna let a contract to either buy something or buy services, and it's at that point that you would make sure you've checked all the boxes, that you've followed all the policies, you've got good bidding practices on maybe both of those, services and goods. And I, I think, once we get the, my, my view, once we get the accounting firm in here, I think we ought to talk about possibly the treasurer stepping in and sort of managing that process.
But the problem, but the problem is, we don't know about it, Tom, until the bill shows up on the desk.
I'm saying that apartment heads, it, it's been demonstrated, should not be able to engage or buy these things on their own. These things should go through a process, like most organizations, where you have a purchase order or a service contract that is issued by the organization. The department head certainly, you know, play a very important role in that process, and I, I get that, but there's, there's standard business practices that ought to be gotten. There are probably contracts that ought to be issued or we're accepting from a vendor, and it's got their terms and conditions. All of that should be, you know, looked at from the town's perspective, and there ought to be a, a formal review and issuance of a purchase order or a contract by the town. And I, I think we ought to have somebody doing that here, not department heads.
Until we can get to that point, because that's, I think we agree, several months out.
Yes, it is.
I, you know, I'm gonna send a memo to all of the department heads telling them what is required, and, I mean, you know, no, we want... We have, there have to be consequences, I'm sorry, I mean, there has to, we've gotta do something.
What we can legally do is, first of all, we send the thing to each, each department head. It's gonna be different, I don't know how we do it with the road commission, is, because it's different, because we, we're not really their bosses. But, um, but with the other department heads, um, you know, we send them the thing. This is what you're to either give, hand out, or email these individuals you're gonna hire before they even think about coming to work. Um, if they don't send the stuff in before they hire them, I'm gonna write the individual up, okay, because that's not good. And, um, we'll hold the check for the individual for thirty days. And we've, we've gotta do something to make it so they don't do it. I think we can legally hold it for thirty days, so...
Well, it depends, it depends on if they, the department head made arrangements in advance that said they would pay them in seven.
If the department head gets, gets written up for it, then he'll probably end up doing his job and making, their job, and making sure that these individuals have the insurance.
Department head shouldn't be telling them how many days they're gonna get their check anyway.
But the, when you hire any individual, the first thing you should ask and tell them, I need you to drop your liability off, your workman's comp, everything should be on town hall before you even land on a, on a town of Acton site.
All right.
We make, we make everybody else do it.
I'm gonna send some emails, I'm just, you know, wanna go on record that, you know what I mean, it's, you know, we're getting invoices fourteen, fifteen days later.
I don't wanna hold anybody's check.
Well, no, we can't.
Legally, you can't. These people are acting as agents for the town.
We can't, we can only hold it until the next payday, and that's, unless you have a policy...
I've never heard of such a thing.
Well, until, unless the town of Acton has a policy that says we're net thirty, or we, we pay our bills, this, we have to put them in the next cycle. They, they have a verbal agreement with the department head, they've done the work. This is from Maine Municipal. They've done the work, you know, it's been completed to the satisfaction of the town. It's not the contractor's issue, the department head didn't get the paperwork. We have to do what it, I mean, we, our deadline is, let's just say, noon time on Tuesdays. If it comes in afternoon time on Tuesday, we can hold it, but they're saying we have to put it in the next cycle if the work's been completed.
I, I don't, I, I, they may have said that, but, um, there, if, if there are no payment terms, if there was nothing in writing for payment terms, then a thirty-day payment is a very standard practice.
Assuming we're doing that for everybody, or just certain...
I mean, it's standard.
We don't, when our salt bill comes in, we can hold our salt bill for thirty days.
But all I'm saying, but past practice is we don't. We pay bills when they come in.
I, I understand, that's our practice.
That's all I'm saying, and those are the questions MMA is asking.
Well, when you're earning five percent on your money...
We should be waiting.
You, we should be holding on to things as long as we can anyways.
I'm, I'm only talking about using this as a strategy to make sure that they, you know, you know, make these people want to make sure they get their stuff in. Um, I don't wanna hold their money for thirty days, because we don't, you know, it's not...
The pressure needs to be on the department heads.
The department heads, heads up to the...
I can, I can very well see going to purchase orders. That would, that would put the cycle of anything we buy through this office.
That's right.
All right, so that's our, hope that's all it takes, is a little email reminder, and we'll hope that everybody gets better. Um, but I'll tell you now, after we get through the audit, after we get through everything with Mark Roy, we have a stack of current people that don't have workers' comp.
Having some experience with this. What you'll often can find when you get a, a contract, it may not say contract, but it effectively is, from a vendor, they can slip in an indemnity clause, which basically says they're not responsible for anything, and you'll see that often. And so you gotta look through those contracts to make sure there isn't something in there that's gonna harm the town. And, um, and all due respect, I'm not sure all our department heads have been trained in that.
No, they probably haven't.
It's a specialty. It's like anything else. It's like, you know, knowing how to do roads or whatever, purchasing is a specialty.
We have one now that, that just, that did some work in the last couple of weeks, and, you know, he came in with the bill, we spoke to the department head, we spoke to everybody. He sent the letter out, so the, the bill is in an individual's name, okay? He, we had made him send this form out to the state, we had been holding this check. Two and a half, three weeks, today he comes in with the letter saying that he's exempt from workers' comp, doesn't even need the predetermination because he's in LLC, and LLCs don't have to file this form based on the state. But the bill wasn't, but what I'm saying is, the bill wasn't in the LLC's name, so we would've had no way of knowing. I mean, so we took three weeks of his time.
I don't agree with him.
Wow, if the bill wasn't in an LLC name, I'm not sure it's applicable.
Be incorporated or not, I get, I get audited every year on my insurance.
I'm showing the letter, we have a copy of it, the state...
And I, I, I've been, you know, even on my, I had to pay where it was coupled with my father now, they've changed that, imagine that? But, uh, don't matter, any subcontractor, which most subcontractors are either in LLC, because that's how they get around that, okay, have to have some sort of either the state, you know, whatever, or workman's comp. They have to have something or I have to pay for it.
When we go to the executive session, I'll show, he brought the letter in from the state. I'll show you what they, I'll show you what, what he brought us, so.
Every, I just go get some LLCs and I don't have to worry about it.
All right, we'll send an email, see if we can...
You know, we may wanna, um, I, I appreciate you wanna get something out now to kinda stop this, and I, I think that's a great idea. I wonder if Maine Municipal can, um, help us do a, a review of this area? And, um, sort of help us establish what best practices are with other towns? Because perhaps it's a little unique to towns, and I may not understand that, but, um, maybe they can help us put together a purchasing program that we could then put in place, um, and it's consistent with the way most towns do it. Sanford does it that way, I'm sure. Any of the larger towns do this, so, but it doesn't matter whether you're a ten million dollar budget or a fifty million dollar budget, the same issues apply regardless.
All right, I'll reach out, see if they have anything. That's all I have, David.
Are you all set?
I know, I hate being that person.
Okay, liaison updates coming?
Nothing for me.
No.
Oh, you skipped six.
You skipped department head.
Oh, yeah.
You skipped me, you skipped me.
Department head, community chair updates.
Hello, long time no see. Uh, Sam Singleton, the rec director. I wanted to come asking, uh, last year in the fall, we did the Mums fundraiser. We had a lot of people that were interested in us doing it again this year, so we had told them that we were planning on doing it again as it turned really, really well. I wanted to confer with you guys to make sure that it was okay to continue to do it. Um, we have the greenhouse waiting on us to give them an answer.
What was the profit that the town received?
We got five hundred and sixty-three, I think, and it all went into the fundraising file, so it's in, it should be in a separate account, too.
For the rec department?
For the rec.
She said it went into a...
It was supposed to go into just that separate fundraising account that we had talked about last year.
I think there's a reserve account for rec department.
I don't remember the board making that direction, but I can look.
So you did this last year?
We did it last year.
This is obviously rec, this is through the rec?
It was through the rec, yep.
Through the rec.
And it was with a farm field greenhouse on two oh two in Lebanon.
Yeah, yeah, I know what you're talking about, yeah, yeah. I just, well, the only issue I got is, we haven't, you haven't had any rec meetings or anything, right?
Well, that's what...
We're, we're, we're working on getting...
Yeah, I'm still waiting to be able to have a rec meeting, which I'm getting antsy for because I need a shed. Need a shed like yesterday, so the stuff can get out of my house.
You have that room you can use, I mean, you can use the old gym, too.
The problem is, is I don't wanna put all the uniforms back in there because we've already got them all professionally cleaned, so if I put them back in there, we're gonna have to get them cleaned again before they can go out to players.
Container with a cover on it?
Even with it, it's still, they get really, really raunchy.
How much space do you need?
We've got a bunch of totes and all the gear I'd like to put together, but...
I thought she could use behind the curtains until we figure things out.
You know what we could do? Um, I just thought of this, but we got a new storage unit down here on Mills Road. Maybe we see about rent a storage unit for a little while, just, just to get by until we get a new shed.
That would work.
Yeah, or, I mean, again, depending on if it's just a few totes, she can use behind the curtains and save them money. I mean, there's not that much, it depends on how much she has. I mean, you can't have that much.
I've got probably two to four totes per sport that we have. So, but then...
I, I, I think the storage unit would work good, then she has access to it when she needs it, she won't have to worry about coming to town hall.
That's gonna accommodate your budget, so.
Yeah.
Figure that out.
But, but hopefully it's temporary.
Right, but I'm just saying, I know how she is with her, with her money, she, you may fight and buy the curtain.
Oh, I don't know, I hate to say that out loud. I'm hoping.
Yeah, we'll get some prices.
We got two storage units, places right in town that we could call.
Like, three different places, so...
Yeah, yeah, I guess, is that three of them?
I can, I can think of the top of my head, yeah.
I've never looked at, are those like waterproofs, humidity controlled?
Imagine.
They're probably not humidity controlled, but they're...
Waterproof.
I think as long as they're waterproof, um...
As long as they don't smell mildewy, we're good.
That's, yeah, that's what we gotta make sure.
I had rented, I had rented one down at S R Cycles in Chapley.
Oh, yeah, I got that one, too.
For a while, and things come out of it fine.
Uh, like I said, we got two right in town that I know of.
Yep.
And, um...
Get them some prices and see what you think, and come back to me, and we'll run by them with the number.
Okay.
But we are working on getting them appointed, so you'll get a, you'll be able to have a meeting in September.
I don't know.
Wondering if there's anything with the fire department where we might be able to store something?
Oh, they have that large room, they do have that.
And, and I'll, I'll look at Judy, since she's here, whether or not there might be a space, a storage space that you might be able to offer. But, uh, just on a temporary basis, to, I, I'm a little worried about putting it in a storage unit if it's not humidity controlled. This stuff could end up getting...
I think you had, might be on to something with the fire department building over there, and that's pretty empty. We can reach out to Wayne and...
Yeah, as well or not, they want people going into their, into that building.
It would only be her.
Well, I understand that, but...
But it would be on and off, it wouldn't be like a set time of when I'm going.
It's temporary.
It's temporary, hopefully.
So we'll work on continuing to get these members sworn in, and you should be able to have a meeting right after Labor Day.
Okay, perfect.
And, and get a couple prices on those.
Yeah.
And the Mums, um...
It's the only fundraiser that you guys approved last year.
Yeah, because we were told we could do one every quarter, but that was the only one we ended up doing.
How much do you make on each plant?
Is it three dollars on each one?
Let's go back, just to clarify, the board didn't, didn't authorize one fundraiser per quarter, because they've been on the no fundraising.
Yeah, I'm on the no fundraiser thing.
That's what we were told last year, was it was one fundraiser per quarter was okay, and you guys were okay with that because it wasn't...
I'd need that to be accurate. In a meeting?
It was in a meeting, it was one of our meetings that we had, too.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we decide on this one first?
Yes, sign, sign on the Mums and figure out from the Mums.
We'll figure out the Mums first.
Because I've gotta give them an answer.
Because honestly, when I met with the individuals coming on to the new, new committee there, uh, one thing that I emphasized was, uh, I don't wanna see over fundraising.
No, and that's...
Especially when the townspeople approved what they did financially for the rec, so there shouldn't be a need to.
You know, we, we've got the money and stuff to do stuff. We just have to get our, get our engineer and everything, get everything together, which I think we're on roll, we're, we're on our way. But any fundraising from here on out should be going through the committee, okay? It's gonna have to go through the committee, and...
And the select.
Well, yes, I mean, because what, what I told them was, um, I, I don't wanna see over fundraising, and, um, when they vote on, you guys vote on, whatever, you're gonna come back to us, and we'll say yea or nay. But, um, this is kind of a, a situation where they haven't had any meetings in between, you know? Uh, what do you say?
I, I, you know, I, uh, we've got a, a new committee, um, and I'm not sure how many hours it takes to...
It doesn't, all it is is...
To generate three dollars for a pot, but I worry about new committee members getting acclimated and, you know, they're gonna, um... And the fact that I think we had a surplus last year anyways.
Well, so what is the purpose of the fundraiser?
And I, I, I just think, you know, maybe at some point in the future we would do this, but I, I don't know why we're putting committee members through this if the town is, is committed to fund the rec department. Why, why ask them to do this? I don't get it.
Put it, put it in a sense where when I came to you with my budget, I had to slash several things off of my budget, too. So with doing so, I know that, you know, we're granted a generous amount, but we're not given everything that we truly want. So with doing so, I know that, you know, we're granted a generous amount, but we're not given everything that we truly want. So in that, in that aspect.
What's missing?
We had, what, we cut down on the uniforms, we cut down on the, um.
Yeah, but I, I don't know that you wanna get into the line by line, because, you know, you had over a twenty-five percent increase in that budget. When we took the number of actual kids that signed up and multiplied it in times everything, I mean, that meeting you and I came have, the town was more than generous with your budget.
I thought we funded all the.
We did.
No, there was, there was more things on it, though, if you go line by line with version of.
But some of the things in there you're not using, I mean, you know, if you wanna bring this up, I mean, the closing ceremony from tumbling.
That's two hundred dollars.
I know, but there, what I'm saying, there are things you never intend on doing, so to, to make it sound like you have to fundraise, cause you didn't get the budget you wanted is really unfair.
Yeah, yeah, you got, you got plenty of money, and honestly, at the end of the day, um, I know this is, this is great that you're doing this, but it doesn't bode well to have a new committee come in that we've talked to and said, we want you more involved, more of this, more of that, want the committee making these decisions, not just the rec director. And then if we turn around and do this without them being any part of it, would look pretty bad.
I guess, so this was essentially something that was decided on with the original committee, because it was something that you had to get. We voted on it after the end of last year that we were going to continue to do it, because it was one of those, you had to, to know ahead of time, you couldn't know right then and there, you wanna do it when it's supposed to start up, cause they have to have an idea.
There's a meeting or minutes, there was a vote taken on the Mums?
Yeah, if you look back to our meetings from last year.
Yep.
But wasn't, wasn't that to do it last year?
No.
Not to continue it this year?
We voted on a meeting after we finished the Mums last year, I can't remember exactly which meeting it was.
I, I think, given that you've got a brand new committee, substantially.
Most of them are new.
Most of them are new. I think, I think you ought to bring this back to them, and bring back to the committee and let them weigh in on whether or not they think this is a good idea.
The committee wants to feel more useful. And we don't wanna go and start having, especially with a brand new committee, I think there's only two individuals on that committee that are, aren't new. And so, like I said before, you take this whole committee, they wanna be part of something, then something that's already going on without their knowledge, then it just doesn't look good.
Actually, it would have to have been voted on after July first, this year.
Yeah.
You can't do something from a year before, like, uh.
I'm gonna say, we just did it right at the very end of all of that, but at this point, we're not gonna have a meeting in time to be able to do it, cause we haven't been able to get the committee together.
Because you can't schedule it, you just.
I can't schedule it until I get my committee sworn in, so my hands are tied.
But you have a brand new budget, and you don't have any financial needs right now. I mean, when you think about fundraisers and the town rallying behind a fundraiser, you know, you got a brand new budget, they give you playground equipment, they gave you the parking lot, I'm just saying, you know what I mean? What we hear on the other side is that all we're doing is, you know what I mean, those kind of events.
Well, it's, it's not like we've done much fundraising, it's the only fundraiser we did.
But what do we need?
Perfect example is where we have to look into a storage facility. That's extra coming out of the budget that we weren't expecting. It's, it's truth, it's extra that's gonna be hitting us.
Check with the fire department, with the curtains.
You may not have a cost for a storage facility. If we can get the fire department to do it, then, uh, it's.
We're looking at it right now. You, you're, you're, the rec department is funded.
Okay.
So, when, when we're, we're on TV, we're talking about, we don't have enough money for this and that, the, the rec department has plenty of money in their accounts. Um, I, I just, I think we hold off until the rec committee gets.
I'd like to see him have a meeting first.
I'd like to be able to have a meeting, please.
We, we, we've gotta do that, we've just, we've been doing our interviews, trying to go, you know, get this process rolling.
You've got those.
Yeah, we've appointed.
You have a committee, you just can't get them to agree on a date?
No, I can't reach out to them yet.
They're waiting for them to get sworn in, they were just, just notified, they were just appointed last week.
Alright.
So we're waiting for them to come in, somewhere on vacation, somewhere, you know?
Well, you can probably schedule the committee date and get them sworn in before you meet.
Can I just schedule a meeting and get it going?
I mean, the, you can probably schedule the first one, the idea is that, is that the committee is part of picking what day works for them, and then somebody's not making, choosing on their behalf.
So, the, the.
But the first meeting, that really shouldn't matter.
I know, no, I.
That's an organizational meeting anyway.
Get, get your meeting scheduled, just like the rural committee did, and the, the new members have to show up at that point. Then they can talk about when they feel like coming or not.
And I, I know. Sworn in by that date.
I know last year we had issues with trying to make a date work for everybody, because there's so many people that I was told to just pick a day and go with that day, because trying to ask seven different individuals what day works for them.
Should be voting on the day anyways.
Let the committee.
From the second point, from the second meeting on.
We will do that.
First meeting, when they make the motion, this is when we should be having our meetings.
But I mean, you gotta have the first meeting, so.
Okay.
I assume you're gonna have a chairman of the committee?
Somebody will get elected.
That chairman of the committee ought to be able to, you know, get an ag, on the agenda, the, the identification of their meeting dates. And they ought to be able to poll the members, pick the date that works for people. Gonna be a little compromise on the part of people.
She's gonna have to do, the first meeting, she's gonna have to make the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, because right now, there, there, there's no chair.
Yeah.
Yep.
You make the agenda, on the agenda should be, um.
Pointing the chair.
For the chair, vice chair, treasurer slash secretary, then, um, at that point.
New business.
New business would be, um, days when you're gonna have your meetings, no weekends, please, we're not gonna do that again. And, uh, um, yeah, then, then, then you go from there.
Yeah.
The shed on there.
Having a agenda.
The shed will be on there, and, um, just as a heads up, we are starting soccer.
Yep.
On the twenty-first is when practices start, we'll be at the field Monday, Tuesday, and Thursdays. And then games will start September sixteenth, we have other towns coming in.
What other towns you got?
Uh, we have, right now, we have Lyman, Berwick, um, and Wakefield.
Nice.
And I'm working with Milton and Massabesick to see if I can get them to come, too. And then, we're redoing the tournament that we did last year. That was something that we had on the schedule, so that's October fourteenth and fifteenth.
Conflict with Columbus Day tournament, right?
No, it's the weekend after.
Okay, okay, good.
Columbus Day is the weekend before, and then the weekend after is the one that we did last year. So we're gonna do that again, been emailing out to, cause that's like a year out that you have to email everybody. Um, so we are working on that. And then another thing, just to kind of put in the back of your heads, I know I'll have to talk with the board that I'll have as well. Um, something that there's been, I don't know if you've seen the posts on Facebook, a lot of parents, I've also had a lot of them reach out to me, are still asking about before and after care. Just something to put out there, and I know ninety-nine percent of recs do before and after and summer camps and stuff. So, as an idea of possibly doing it at the school.
Did we discuss this last year?
We discussed it last year, we decided.
Decision last year?
Last year, we were told no, um, because there didn't seem to be the need or interest.
Uh, that wasn't the reason.
It was.
It was liability reasons and everything.
That was one of the biggest things was, that was brought to my attention, was that there was no need or interest that you guys had.
One thing that I did when I met with all these people, uh, coming in on the rec, okay? I, I stressed one thing, okay, a couple things, stressed a couple things. No, I'm not running this committee. I'm just a liaison.
Yep.
But, we're trying to get this as a well-oiled machine, is what I wanna see it. But, one thing I, is, I wanna see the sports programs that we exist in function. Properly, make sure everything, you know, eh, everything's working well, before we go jump into other stuff and this and that. But, um, this is something you shouldn't be bringing to us until you've already gone to the committee anyways. Okay?
I was, basically, I was being.
Before the horse already.
I, with this one, I was bringing it up because it's something that's been talked about, okay?
Because this is something that you should be in the committee talking about, first of all. Second of all, we just discussed this and we said no already.
To last year.
To last year, so that even gives you a better reason why you should be talking to the new committee about before you come to us, so we can say no again.
I, I don't know, maybe, um, Maine is different. But every before and after school program that I've ever heard of is run through the school department.
So.
And so maybe it's different here, but, um, you know, this, there are lots of regulations that go along with running those, those programs. Um, there are liability issues, I would imagine there are training issues. Um, it, it's, it's a big undertaking.
So I ended up.
Didn't mention the school was interested in doing it?
School, they, they, I talked to Mr. Ross last year, and he said that if I can get the support, he would have no problem with the rec running it there, because the communication was.
Using the facility.
So we'd be able to facilitate it there, and I'd probably be able to get some of the teachers. However, with this said, I've also, out of pocket, I joined the Maine Parks and Recreation Association. That way I could be kind of part of, of the bigger picture, kinda get more of the training behind the scenes.
Why'd you do that out of pocket?
Because it wasn't part of the budget, so I didn't even bother asking about it, and I just joined.
You, 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 you don't have to.
You should have, you should have come to me, we, we signed up.
We, we have different lines that we could've gotten.
Okay.
Okay.
So I, I did join that, and it's something that they pass down through, and it's actually through some of the lit, um, the literature that they've sent over in regards to the before and after and all of the camps.
If, if we had our own rec building, you know, a community center type deal, I could understand it. Um, unless the school comes to us and says, yeah, this is a great idea, no problem, I just don't.
And didn't we reach out to the superintendent to ask him what kind of? Well, it wasn't a want, I think that he didn't have any, no one had reached out, if I recall, that there was, we weren't seeing the need.
It was a re, it was, but at the end of the day, let's do this.
Meet with the.
Go to your committee, discuss it, uh, you already know what we decided, well, no, you weren't here, okay, but.
I'd be lying.
But the last, um, the board decided, take that into account, whether or not, how much time you wanna spend on it. But I'd rather see you spend your, uh, your time on these sports programs at this point, if you can.
Definitely been doing that already.
I know, yeah.
Definitely been doing that.
And make sure on your agenda, one thing that I, talking to these people, that they wanna make sure that some of the sports weren't being talked about enough. I want you to put on your agenda each sport that you've got, uh, under old business, so you guys go through, make sure that nothing gets skipped.
Okay.
Okay?
So everybody's on base with.
Yeah, just put down all the sports, don't matter if they're fall sports or spring sports, put them all on. That way there, it's discussed at every meeting, so nobody thinks that certain sports aren't getting enough attention.
Perfect, and I think most of the members are actually some of my coaches, so it works out well.
There you go.
Um, and to answer your question, the Y did use to do it, but the last time they did it, they backed out three days before school started, and left the parents hanging, so they never.
Say what again?
The Y, the Y backed out three days before school started.
Oh, okay.
That's not cool.
So.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Appreciate it, thank you. Let's see if I can find the right spot here, okay.
Old business.
It's still in the warm head, oh boy. Boy, don't stare at me, Robin, don't be staring at me.
Uh, nobody wants them containers, them trip, them truck.
Who did you ever, how did you?
I asked, I called, uh, Berwick, Iron, and I called Lamberts today, and Lamberts will take them, you haul them there and take all the wood out of it.
They'll just take them, they won't give you nothing for them.
Well, they will give you some if you take all the wood and you, and we haul it there.
Did you try just posting it on what's up in Acton on the website?
Can't do that, because anybody that goes and gets them has to be fully insured and all that. I mean, you might be able to get a business to come in and do it, but.
That's what I meant, looking for a hauling company.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
By the wood, you mean the floor?
The floor, the sides, every, no wood can be in the trailers at all.
Those are old, they probably got quite a bit of wood in them.
Yes, they do.
And the wooden floors.
Wooden floors, yes.
You got a solution?
Huh?
You got a solution?
Uh, crunch them up and put them in Punske's containers.
Yeah, that will go up to.
I guess, yeah, I don't know.
Even if you take, even if you take the wood out of them, you're still gonna throw that in the container.
Yeah.
So can you take the, what's metal left, throw it in that metal container?
Yeah, eh, eh, yeah. It's just, it's just gonna take time to get all the wooden stuff out of it, yeah.
Well, it won't if you, eh, 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 like I said, see if Will can come up with his estimate, I'd, I'd run that thing apart in ten minutes, you know?
Do it with the hydraulic pliers?
Yeah.
Yeah, something like that. And just rip it apart, and then stuff it in a container, and.
Yeah.
Um, I think, if, if that's, if we can't get rid of them, that, that's what we'll have to.
Well, I called them two today, and.
Well, let's look into it with Will, see what could be done.
I didn't call CIA, no, I called, I called Berwick and Lamberts.
Call CIA, they might be interested.
Okay.
Uh, if not.
You have a number for them, or? Would it be on the website?
It's on the website, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Um, would you say, yeah?
What? No, no, nothing, I'm sorry.
So that's.
So, see if Will's interested, I don't wanna volunteer him for something, but he takes care of all that stuff up there, I would say that's something he would do. And see, I guess you're probably gonna have to get a rough idea how much it's gonna cost, right? And make sure there's money in the budget for it, but we have to get rid of them, right?
Mm-hmm.
So.
Well, one way or another, yeah.
I would, I would ask Punske to see if he can bring up a separate container, just for that.
Yeah, if we go that route.
Plug up your steel container, cause you're gonna wanna do that separate, matter of fact, I wouldn't do it with the public there.
Right, no, 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 I, no. And I had the, uh, compactor and the two bale is serviced yesterday. So that's all done for another year.
Who serviced them?
Atlantic.
Who was it?
Atlantic. Recycling and so.
Oh, Atlantic.
We done it every year, do I supposed to get? Okay, is there, we have to do it every year for these companies?
Insurances are only good for a year, workers comp predetermination is only good for a year.
Good, they're on my, on my list of people to, you, you, so.
When you make a phone call to anybody to have any services done in that yard, I need your liability and everything sent.
Per, every, every year.
Yeah, every year, every year.
Now that I know.
You can get a copy, and, and, and you heard me say there were several department heads, so, I don't want you to feel.
Yeah, yeah.
Some of, most of the times what will happen is, if there's someone that we're frequently using,
Mm-hmm.
the treasurer should be fine, you know, they'll usually have something pop up, say, okay, bu, and, and they automatically have it sent. But it's when you start using people we don't use all the time.
I totally understand that.
Just do everybody.
If you have your list, if you have your list of vendors, at some point, let's get a copy of all the liabilities that we have, so you can see the expiration dates, and you can help kinda manage it and track it.
Okay, yeah, cause I'm keeping everything at the.
Right.
On my calendar at the, at the transfer station, yeah.
So that you can see the dates as well.
Okay, very good.
Thanks, Robin.[1584.61]
Thanks, Robin.
Okay.
Okay, any more department head committee chair updates? Oop, no, we're already past that, Ali.
Yeah, I think we're on to.
No, we're.
Old business, right?
Yes.
Nope, we're on old business, fire station phone system.
Working on the RFP, no.
Confused. This speed's going a lot longer than usual.
Working on the RFP, no update this week.
Okay. Cool, we're down to new business, West Shore Drive, Culver, uh extension request.
So Mr. Nick Curtis is here and he's gonna come up to the podium. Um he is, his company is the company that was awarded the bid to replace the West Shore Drive Culvert. Um I did talk to him for a minute before the meeting, but we're gonna kind of do this together, so he he's seen this document, but before we get into his request, um two things that you know, so you should know, so first of all, he reached out to Maureen um and asked her if he could um possibly get an extension. He's gonna talk to you about the water levels and basically what the rain has done to him these last few months. And it really all kind of works together once he fills you in on what Sanford said, but more importantly, I think, is the email that we received from Inland Fisheries um just about an hour ago um that I want to share with you and then let him chime in on on both of them, but. So Dino, who is the chief planner from Inland Fisheries, says, Jennifer, can you please provide an update on square pond culvert replacement? We haven't heard from the town since before the project was put out to bid. My understanding is that the project is expected to start over Labor Day and finish by uh Columbus Day. Is that still correct? I also want to make sure that there won't be any vehicles, equipment, or material stored on our property. I've listened to a few select board meetings and my understanding is that there are some clear happenings along the access road to the gravel pit to widen the road. I haven't had the opportunity to check our property lines in that area, but want to make sure the town is aware that the department's property line is fifty feet from the center line of the existing road from the entrance of West Shore Drive to the bridge just before the gravel pit, see the attached survey. In listening to one of the meetings, I also heard that the board referenced blocking off the entrance to our property. Can you tell me more about that? So.
First of all, I I find that kind of humorous myself, because I mean, a state, state domain owns that property. You know, inland fisheries, the government, when you can't tell somebody can't park on their property, that's it, you could park, if you have a boat on, make sure when you show up, you got a boat trailer on. You're gonna be alright, but.
Let's start with Nick while we just take that in, while he's thinking. Nick, tell us, tell them a little more about the extension and where we're at.
Well, basically, I was looking to extend the um completion dates. We want to start the beginning of October, have it completed by the end of October.
So I think the email said October third to November third. Did that sound right?
Right.
Okay.
Um basically just gives us all the full weeks of October. Um you know, especially like as Dave knows, doing construction working this season, it's been a real, you know, it's been a wet one, there's been delays.
Terrible.
So I mean, there's, there's some need for adjustments.
Tell them about your conversation with Sanford, because that falls better in their timeline, doesn't it?
Yeah, I'd been reaching out, you know, it started with, you know, I get a name from so-and-so on who controls the dam and finally got a, you know, the grip that Sanford is ultimately who controls all the water levels and um uh the gentleman down there, Alex, he gave me all, you know, quite a lot of information actually on, you know, what they can and can't do and water levels and um, you know, when they can start dropping water levels and really the beginning of October is when they can really drop the levels down um to what, you know, they are during the winter. Um you know, obviously, right now, compared to a typical summer, they're quite a bit higher than what they usually would be. So I mean, it would be an advantage if we could move it to that um October start date and, you know, possibly get those lake levels down a little lower than they are right now.
And I'd have to think that more residents would be gone too.
Have you agreed with him on what the level should be or how how low should they be taken down?
As low as possible, you know, is is obviously gonna make things easier for us.
Well.
They're only gonna lower it to a certain point.
Right, yeah, they're, they're not gonna make any special adjustments beyond what they would normally do for us.
Good.
What what they would just be doing at that time is when they would typically start dropping the lake anyway.
See, I I wasn't aware they dropped the lake in the, in the fall. It, I know it came down, but I I thought that was more from.
Probably a lot of what you're, what you're used to is, you know, this time of the year, generally, it would be quite a bit lower than it is right now. Just, just because you don't typically have this much rain.
Floating right now, yeah.
Right.
Well, okay, um so you want to start October first?
Yeah, that first, full week of October, yeah.
You know, at the end of the day, it might, may actually work out better, cause we were, we were concerned about the uh boats and everybody getting stuff.
Getting the boat out.
Yeah, and Sanford all but told him they weren't lowering it before that. Did, did, did he reference, cause I saw Tom's eyes light up, did they, did he reference? Cause he, they always tell us the same thing, that they can't lower it before that. Did he reference who determines that can't? Did he say anything about?
I think there's a few different factors. Part of it is, you know, people with their docks and their boats, the other part is, you know, everything that's downstream, they're only allowed. I don't have, I mean, he gave me a pretty good detailed email, but.
That I think is the issue.
It's the downstream side. Right, right now, they're, they're trying to let as much go as they possibly can, because I think things would be a lot higher than they would be if, you know, if they weren't releasing as much as possible right now.
Would you mind sharing that email with us, just so we can kind of learn a little more about it?
I can forward it to you, yeah.
I have no issue with extending it.
I don't either, I think it's fine.
I think it's fine. Do you think it's gonna be a four-week project?
Oh, we'll have it complete in four weeks, yeah.
No, but do you think it will go that for four weeks or do you think it might be?
I, you know, I don't think it's, I don't think four weeks is needed.
Yeah.
A lot of it's just, you know, as you get going on a project, things, things don't go as planned.
I understand you got the four weeks.
You need a little wiggle room.
You're gonna fall into that trap.
Alright.
Come in.
Al.
Alright, so with a motion of the board, I'll create an addendum that you guys can sign, Mr. Furst can sign.
So what do we want to do? Uh go from October?
Yeah, his original email said October third to.
First to the thirtieth? Is that what we're looking at?
The third of November would get us.
He said.
Third of November. Said it Monday.
That gives you four weeks?
I think it's Friday, I think is.
Ten, three to November.
That's like five weeks, isn't it?
Well, I'll make a motion that.
I think originally, I think what we had was six weeks.
Yeah, I think we, we did the contract for the road for seven.
Yeah, it's five weeks, so October third, so if you do October, October first to November third, that's on, Sunday through Friday.
Um I'll make the motion.
Okay, good.
From October first to November third.
A second.
All in favor?
So we'll create an, create an addendum for both of you to sign now. You want to talk about the inland fisheries and anything that Curtis should know, or how you want to handle that?
So, I'm trying to figure out where both their property is.
Well, I showed you the survey that that's hard to read.
Woods, no, is it Woods? Uh.
Good.
Good, I think it's good. He owns that whole left-hand side and the right-hand side on one side of it. Um.
I, I think their property line is in the bridge area. I don't think it, I I don't think it extends much.
You're not allowed.
Beyond it either way.
He's not allowed to go beyond what there's.
Reading that email, it kind of seemed to me as they were more concerned about that temp road. It said fifty foot.
Yeah.
From the center line of that road.
Well. Didn't we have, didn't ransom arrange for a survey of that whole area?
Yes, so she says in an email um today, when, well, when she asked about.
Job site itself. We're not, we're talking about over on the boat launch side where they come in, right?
That's kind of what it seemed like in that email, if they were talking about, cause they mentioned widening and, cause on the plan for the culvert, we're not to cut any trees.
Yeah, you, I mean, you can't go on their property, cause you can't go beyond what's there.
Right.
So that doesn't even make sense. It's.
Seems to me they're talking to temp road.
Over on the boat launch coming in on the other side.
I assume that's what they're talking.
So what we gotta do is call Mr. Kittredge. We gotta figure out who owns the road on the way in.
Okay.
Cause I believe Peppin's own the road, they own the right-of-way that goes through there.
Wait a minute, there's the road that goes at the ramp and then there's a road that goes back, right?
When you, when you come in, you you got Mr. Peppin's driveway, and then right after that, you have the road that goes in the boat launch. When you go into the boat launch, there's a road that goes in there, there's another road that comes out, correct? That comes out into Mr. Peppin's, and now it's Mr. Kittredge's property. I believe Kittredge owns the right-of-way down through there. I don't believe Peppin took away, you know, he just gave inland fisheries that right-of-way, as far as I know. But I'll, I'll, I'll give Mr. Kittredge a call tomorrow and see what's up with that right-of-way through there, but as far as I know, I mean, we have a right to use that just as well as he does, so um I, I, I think what they're doing, they don't want him parking his equipment in the boat launch, right? Is that what you get?
I don't, I don't need to.
You're gonna stay right where you are.
We're gonna stay right where we're working anyway. The only thing I would have liked to done is, is block off that boat ramp. I don't, I don't need anybody out around that. Our coffee dams there, I don't, there's nowhere really for anyone to go with a boat.
I think what we'll do is we'll send an email to inland fisheries suggesting that they put a big sign up saying um out of use.
Yeah.
Okay, if they don't.
There's gonna be nowhere for a boat to go.
But at that point, it's not even gonna be your problem at that point. We'll let inland fisheries worry about that.
I mean, if they, if people go in there, they're not gonna be able to go anywhere, so I guess, I guess they'll learn.
Really fast, fast move.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and he, and he does say in there, he's just looking for more information about it, so we can work together, we can draft up our reasons why we think it might be a good idea and see if we can get them to consider it.
Um we, we don't have to block off, I don't know why we were talking about blocking off the other entrance, there was some reason why, I can't remember, but I mean, I don't think it's gonna affect his job any.
I think, I talked to Will and he, he's kind of said the same thing that Mr. Curtis said, was essentially to keep people out of there.
Yeah, just to keep them out.
I mean, that's what I understood it to be.
We just put a sign up, you know, have the, have, I just have inland fisheries do it, because it's, I, I don't think they're very happy with this whole deal. So we'll let it, let them deal with that and um on your end of it, I don't, it, it, you just have to deal with it.
Yeah, I don't, it shouldn't be an issue anyway, really.
Is understanding this, Peppin's home, there is a road.
Yeah, yeah, you're wrong. So.
And then this is the boat launch.
Peppin's road.
Yeah.
Boat launch, and then the road goes like this to the boat launch.
There, there was a, there was another road next to Peppin's driveway, and I assume that's where they were accessing.
No, they come right, they come right down, you can get the driveway, this is the pit road, they come right off the pit road, go right in, just like that.
Okay.
Yeah, so then there's another little road that goes this way that goes, so they can go in the pit.
Okay.
Um so I'll, I'll call Kittredge, make sure we got our right-of-ways and everything. I, I'm sure he does. Um and we'll let inland fisheries take, um we'll, we'll send them an email uh hoping that they'll put something up. I, I would hope they'd put something right across, say, closed, I would think, because it's really.
No reason to.
To go play in the swamp.
There's nowhere to go once you were to get in there, so.
Just so that you guys don't have any issues down there, and we'll, we'll do, we'll be careful for that.
Yep.
And uh other than that, anything else? All good? I think.
Good.
Just hope it don't snow early, right?
Hey, if it's not raining, it'll probably snow.
As Elma said, it's gonna.
I, I plowed eight inches of snow, day before Halloween, so.
It was more than eight, it was eighteen inches.
I don't know, it was enough, I was plowing it, it sucked, so.
Great, yeah.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming in.
Alright, guys, thank you, thanks.
Okay, down to be tax rate calculation, this is.
Yes, which, anybody in the audience can attest that's been on the screen, Joyce, for the last hour? The tax rate calculator has been on the screen for the last hour?
Yes, it was.
It's blue now, Tom.
I didn't see it there.
Oh, so it's gone?
I'm gonna get it back out, you start talking. They all have copies.
We, uh, no, I, I can talk, it shouldn't take you long, should it, Jennifer? Uh Jennifer and I and, and the treasurer had an opportunity to meet with a representative from uh the valuation company, Reval Company. And uh we went through their, the rate calculation, uh spreadsheet that is contained in the town software. We got all the numbers from them, we agreed on all the numbers, and what I, what we have today is a view of the tax rate uh that is the same view that we presented in a uh information session that we had in July?
Yes.
In July, okay. So let me, let's, let's go through this. Uh you'll see the, the, the two thousand twenty-three actuals. These are the actual numbers that were used in calculating the tax rate la- last year.
These are the numbers, I'm sorry, that we received.
Yeah, so you notice that the, in the blue box at the bottom, eleven ninety-five, that was the actual tax rate that was in place last year. And you can see all the revenue items that total a million five oh two. You can see the uh, the various expenditure amounts uh that were approved uh by warrant, totaled nine million oh fifty-nine. And you can see that last year we used three hundred thousand of undesignated reserves. Um and the school used two hundred and ninety-six thousand of its reserves. So that brought us down to a net amount that we needed to, needs to be, needed to be funded from tax revenue. And that was seven million two hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. The property valuation in total for the town last year was six hundred and seven thousand dollars. So that uh calculated out at a mil rate of eleven ninety-five, okay? Now to twenty-four, these are the numbers that we have uh developed for the, this year's tax calculation. And um in particular, you'll notice excise taxes have gone up. It was uh both automobile and boat, as I recall, went up significantly, so we have more revenue there. Uh permits and licensing fees are off, they're off uh for all sort of construction-related, the plumbing and uh permits, et cetera. Those are just trending down, and we saw that occurring in this current, in the last year, and we think that and, and that was not a full year of reduction, cause some of that reduction happened in sort of the latter part of the year. We're not getting annualized, we think we're gonna be at like a hundred and six thousand for those. Uh and you can see the other items, investment income, last year we had fifteen thousand dollars. With the new investment program, we expect that to be two hundred thousand dollars. Um the rescue service fees, um they're down significantly. And we think some of that will continue as we get a full year of reductions uh affecting uh the coming year. So we think that's gonna be down to ninety thousand. Last year we had some opera money that we do no longer have, so that's there it out, and the main revenue sharing is about flat. So we think our revenues will go from a million five oh two to a million four twenty-one. Again, these are the approved budget numbers that come in at nine million eight oh four. Um and the school has in its budget planned on using two hundred thousand dollars of the school undesignated reserves uh to, to offset the two thousand and twenty-four budget. So that means on this basis, we have to raise eight million one hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. The value of the town's property has gone up over ninety-five percent. It's gone to one billion one hundred and ninety-one million dollars. So without any use of town undesignated reserves, the tax rate will come out at six eighty-seven. You'll recall that a letter was sent out to all residents, to all, all property owners, estimating that tax rate at six ninety-nine. But we had to, we had an opportunity to chew up some of the revenue sources and some of the numbers, and that's now at a minimum coming down at six eighty-seven. Let's go to the next page, Jennifer. Okay, um this is intended to uh provide a display of what the, the town and school reserve balances look like and what will happen to the tax rate if we use some of those reserves in twenty-four to lower the tax rate. Uh the general government, the, the general undesignated reserves at the end of twenty-two stood at basically two point nine million. Through various warrants and articles, we appropriated in twenty-three, five hundred and eighty-five thousand of that. And in the current year, twenty-four, we did another two hundred and twenty-two thousand. So the undesignated reserve balance, it says July twelfth, is really currently is two million oh eighty-nine. And you can see it's, the revised calcu- of tax rate is six eighty-seven. And just to quickly go over the, the school numbers, their reserves are a million three sixty. And you can see they were planning to, they, the two ninety-six was already deployed and used for twenty-three. They're, it said earlier, two hundred thousand for twenty-four, and they're planning to use another two hundred thousand in twenty-five. That will bring their reserves down to six hundred and sixty-three thousand for a total of two million seven hundred and fifty-three thousand in reserves. Okay, you'll notice in the yellow blocks, I just want to point out that we have not yet finalized an accounting of what the fiscal year twenty-three, year ending June thirty twenty-three, budget results may be. We've done some preliminary looking for the town, and I believe there will be a surplus. But I, 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 it's about all I can say at this point. Um as soon as we get that surplus, we'll, of course, report that out. Uh and personally, I think the school will have a surplus as well, but they have not audited their numbers completely. And they've asked that we hold, and I respect that. They don't want to get numbers out and have to pull them back later, so whatever their numbers are, my guess is in about four weeks, we'll have this, we'll, we'll know those numbers. But I just want you to know, at this time, we've not added that in or made any provision for what was likely a surplus that we generated in twenty-three, okay? So uh we got two million seven, and the, 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 as you can see, the revised tax rate's six eighty-seven. That's what we saw in the previous schedule, given all the revenue and expenses and the town valuation. So when the town and the school both have reserve policies, and the reserve policies work off basically a percentage range of the prior year's uh expenditure base. And the town hasn't had a FY twenty-three budget of three million nine seventy-six, and the school had a budget of five million five fifty-eight. The range for the town is to keep reserves between sixteen point seven percent and thirty-three percent. And the range for the school, which is basically stipulated by state law, as I understand it, should be between five and nine percent. So um at a minimum level, this, the town should keep six hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars in its reserves, according to its current policy, at the low level. At the high level, it could be a million three. And so that would produce an excess of reserves over those policy thresholds of anywhere from seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand to a million four of excess reserves. The school at five and nine percent, its reserves at a minimum have an excess of a hundred and sixty-three thousand to three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. So what we wanted to do tonight, go back up, Jennifer, if you will, just a little bit, is to demonstrate what will happen if, if we use reserves to lower the tax rate. And when I'm talking about using reserves, I'm talking about the town's reserves, not the school's reserves. That's, that's a subject for future, future time. I'm gonna suggest that we plug five hundred thousand in there. The tax rate would go to six dollars and forty-five cents mil rate. That would leave us, go, no, uh go back to the, the schedule, Jen, if you would, go down below, that would leave us with reserves. Did that, not do that right? Oh, minus the five hundred thousand, that's a minus five hundred thousand. That's why, there we go. That would leave us with the town of reserves over and above a policy level. At a high level, we'd have an excess of two hundred and seventy-seven thousand in reserves, and up to, at a low level, nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in reserves. And up to, at a low level, nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in reserves. Given what I've seen in looking at the budget to actual for twenty-three, I'm reasonably confident that we're going to have a surplus. And I think that surplus will cause those numbers to go up by the time we get the final accounting. Go back, if you would, Jennifer. So that would get, what happened?
Yeah, I, once I made it negative, it went, the tax rate went, went the other way.
Oh, go up to that formula. Maybe.
We already saw the reserve number, so we were talking about here now, so we can leave it like that for the sake of.
Yeah, six forty-five.
Yes.
That would get us to a tax rate of six forty-five. Maybe we should stop there and have a discussion.
Good job, all of us, Tom. Hmm? It's a good job with all of this, it's very helpful.
Yeah.
So as Tom said, we went through this line by line with Adonalsen Associates.
Yeah.
I mean, it couldn't be any more laid out. A lot of the numbers, if you look at this tax rate calculator that he was going through, you know, all of these appropriations, the budgets, I mean, that's already set. The only number that the town is really playing with is, I mean, the total revenues, that's at our discretion. And, and we went through each one of them line by line, looked at the last three years to come up with these numbers here. So really, the only number up for discussion is how much of the unassigned fund balance. That's what's not, you know, not really set in stone. And it all comes down to where you want to leave your balance at.
Now, is that, the balances left, that's over and above what we have in the CDs and all that, or is that?
Well, these are reserves, they are not cash.
Okay.
Cash is, is, reserves are not the same as cash.
Okay.
They're, they happen to be very similar in our town. But if, if we did this, we would end up drawing on our cash. It would, that five hundred thousand would draw the cash, but those numbers on reserves don't reflect what our cash balances are.
And obviously, we don't want to put too much forward, because we won't be able to continue that through the years. We don't want to spike. So we did three hundred last year, do two hundred this year, and.
Well, we, five hundred this year.
We've never done five hundred, that I, in, in ten years that I've been here. But we've never had the money that we've had, we have now.
And.
So.
I, I don't know, I did, I, prior to our public hearing, I personally, I probably wouldn't have used five hundred thousand. I think I had a lower number in mind.
Yeah.
But I think there was a pretty strong expression by the people that were here about wanting to lower the tax rate. And so for me, this represents a, an acknowledgement of that. And, but I think, David, your point is that if, if we don't continue that, that tax rate went from, what, six eighty-nine to six forty-five?
Right.
If we don't do that five hundred thousand next year and do zero, it's going to go up by forty cents plus whatever other budgetary increases are going to happen. That's the consequence of having, of using one-time money like this. When you stop it, it's going to, it's going to cause a larger increase in the tax rate in that year than you would normally have.
But based on that five hundred thousand, if you go back, I made it negative again, so you could look at this, based on the surplus policy and based on, without releasing numbers, the numbers we kind of think the town is going to be at at the end of, you know, that, once we get audited.
Yeah.
There's a good chance we may be able to use that same amount next year.
I, I think, I think there is, I think there is, and.
Well, pretty much what we're going to end up doing by offsetting that five hundred thousand, our, our, our budget went up seven hundred and fifty thousand roughly. That's what our, our, our numbers went at the end of the year. You know, it really will be only two hundred and fifty thousand dollars more than we were last year.
Over, over the last, like I say, I've got like ten years worth of history in the back of my head. In doing this, in putting the different numbers in, I'm confident with what you've come up with, I think that will be fine.
I think that you'll be able to match that next year, just the way everything's going and the preliminary numbers that Tom has found and.
And you'll be able to, we'll always be able to probably put something forward.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, we've done two hundred thousand, I think, as a, as a minimum.
I think, I, I think there'll be.
Three has been about the average, so I, yeah.
I, I think when we get the accountants in here this year, and they revise the budget process, do it differently, hopefully, we have a better read of what the budget should be.
Right.
And if we decide to cut that budget close, then we may not have a surplus. And so we have to think about the consequence of that going forward.
If we maintain what we're doing right now and figure a seventy percent increase every year, and we're still having that, as long as we're taking the money and putting it right back, like, like kind of what we're doing, and we maintain, we should be fine.
Yeah, it's going to take us another year to get the reevaluation numbers and everything figured into everything. We've got to figure it in here.
But do we actually see a year of. We've got a hundred thousand somewhere here.
Yeah, he's got an overlay for a hundred and four thousand, yeah, for those abatement supplements.
I, I, I like your recommendation. Yeah, I do, too.
I agree, he's done great.
Do we want to have public comment on this, or?
Yeah, why don't we open up the public comment? I saw Judy was ready to go.
I, you know, I just wanted to say that, you know, I know the school, we, we got some additional revenue at the end of the year that we weren't expecting. And I know we're going to have a surplus, too. And as soon as we get all those final figures in and figure what we need, then I'm sure the school board will vote to turn some of our surplus back to the town, which could go towards this or whatever. I mean, that's what we, that's what we always do, is turn, we've, we just had some revenues come in from the state that you don't know. All of a sudden, you get a check and you say, oh, where'd that come from, you know, it's. And, you know, we also had some, we had some surplus in our budget, so.
Yeah.
I'm sure that probably by the time we have our September meeting, our school, school board September meeting, we should have all these figures by then, right? From the, from the audit and all that, so that we'll know what kind of amount we can take from our surplus, because we, we need to stay within our five and nine percent as well. But it's always been our intention, when we have extra money, to turn it back to the taxpayers. And I'm, I'm sure we'll be doing, I'm sure we'll be doing that again.
Judy, personally, I, I, and I know you've had a plan for how to return your excess over and above your policy level back. You, you have a plan, three-year plan to get it down. I, I would appreciate it if, once you get your, your audited numbers, that we have, I don't know what forum, but we have an opportunity for the selectmen to meet with maybe the school board.
Yeah.
And try to agree or to have some, you know, under, common understanding, at what rate that should come back. And if you get a surplus this year, personally, I don't want to have to wait three years to get it back. I would love to see it sooner. So it would be good to have that discussion. So if you could, once you get your final numbers, before you make a decision with the school board, if you could create an opportunity for, to have a discussion with the selectmen, I would appreciate that.
Well, I think that would be a great idea.
Okay.
Yeah. And I, I think we're also going to be looking at asking the town to give us permission to take some of that to replace some of our reserve accounts, too, that have been drawn down. So whenever there's a town meeting or a.
That would be a great discussion.
A vote or anything.
Over all of that at that time.
Yeah.
Sounds great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, awesome, so.
Anyone else?
We're going to, yeah, do we have anybody else who wants to, Joyce, no?
No, okay. I'll make a motion that we appropriate or use five hundred thousand of town undesignated reserves to lower the the amount otherwise needed for, from taxes.
Set the tax rate at, we're going to do it.
Yeah, we're going to set the tax rate, correct?
Okay.
So let, let's say, make a motion, we put forward five hundred thousand towards the taxes from general surplus to set the tax rate at six forty-five.
All right.
Seconded.
All in favor? Okay. Awesome. Okay, let me see, where are we now, okay?
Now the work begins.
Arnold Murray, correspondence. We've got an email from Mr. Mur, Mr. Murray, correct?
So we got an email from Mr. Murray on July thirteenth. Is that, that.
July thirteenth?
Well, July thirteenth is the original email that said that the voters were disenfranchised by being denied the town report. Okay? So he, without reading it word for word, basically goes through and, and says that we did not comply with state law and that the audit report was filed with the state on April twelfth. And the auditor does the audit for a quarter of municipal, um, quarter of municipalities in Maine. And, you know, he's not sure why they're not complying. So that went to the full board's level.
There were a couple of issues in there, it seemed to me. One that he wrote to the selectmen and didn't feel it was appropriate that the town administrator responded rather than the selectmen. And personally, I, I know that I and the other selectmen, I believe, had an opportunity to talk individually with Jennifer about what that response should look like. Very difficult to get five selectmen together.
My response is a lot different than yours is.
What's that?
My response is a lot different than everybody else's was.
It's very, very difficult to get five selectmen to write a letter.
Yeah.
One letter. I mean, that's a, that's a nightmare. Doing it with two is a nightmare, as far as I'm concerned. So we all shared our view with Jennifer. Jennifer drafted it, we looked at it. It was, it reflected the view of the selectmen. I personally have no problem with Jennifer writing on our behalf. So in response to Mr. Murray, I, I think when we get letters
Yeah.
from citizens, they should know that those are reviewed by the selectmen. We, we, through Jennifer, because we, it's, you know, we can't get together and talk about this outside of the meeting, we give our thoughts and comments, she, you know, summarizes those in a memo, we all look at it, we say, make any changes, and it goes out. So as far as I'm concerned, it was from the selectmen.
Okay, so that response that we sent to Mr. Murray was apologizing, and he didn't get a response earlier, but, you know, showing, reminding him that I was not CC'd in it, therefore, I was unable to follow up on behalf of the board. But in regards to the town report, so we were, we are able to show proof via UPS shipping receipt that a copy was in the municipal office three days before town meeting. During the week of the town meeting, only one person came to the office looking for a copy. We showed it to him, offered him a copy, and he declined. So state law says that copies for distribution have to be made three days before. Now, it was not ideal that we didn't have two or three hundreds sitting on every counter, but we did meet state law. We have a receipt showing that it was delivered in time, and we could have made copies for anybody that asked. It's not ideal, nobody's questioning that.
I, I think there's a, sort of a difference of opinion about whether or not it was made available or not. I've reviewed what, what Jennifer had done and what she made available. I think under the circumstances, I think it was the best we could have done. And the reason, the problem was, I think he's referencing a date that R H, R Smith filed the financials with the state. I got to tell you, that was done without the selectmen having a chance to review the statements. And I, I've been signing off on financial statements for decades. And no statements are ever released unless the client, in this case, the selectmen, have reviewed them and signed them. And I reviewed them in detail. It's a hundred-page report. I reviewed it in detail, I had a long list of questions of the auditor. This was after the April eleventh day.
That's the day we started reviewing it.
We went back and forth with the auditors.
Hundreds of emails.
That, that, trying to resolve these items. Many of them were satisfactorily answered. That's fine. Some of them, personally, I wouldn't have agreed with them. But at this stage, I just wanted to get the statements out the door, and I just said, okay, we'll go with it. And.
So May twenty-third, the May twenty-third via email is the day that we received the short version from the auditor.
And the reason management does that is in the prior year, I'm not sure it was done, because when I looked at those statements, there was a multimillion-dollar error on the face of one of the primary statements. And so that's why the client, in this case, the town, has an obligate, they are our statements. They are not R H R Smith's statements. Those are the town's statements. And it's our responsibility to make sure they're right. So it's incumbent upon us to review them. So it takes time. A hundred-page report and.
New treasure, lots of questions.
And they are not the easiest to figure out. I'll, I'll tell you that. They are, they are, you know, numbers don't flow the way you would normally think they would flow. So I, we did our best to get the final report. So in, in all due respect to Mr. Murray, I, I do believe that we did everything we possibly could to get those out and published as quickly as I can, as we could. So I stand by your response. I, I hope, Mr. Murray couldn't be here tonight, I hope he can watch the tape and, and understand. If he has further questions, I would encourage him to come to the meeting, and I'll do my best to respond to him.
So you did see his, so just to clarify, to finish up what he was saying, when we, when the select board signed off on that audit, we have an email that it was delivered, the short form on the twenty-third, and it was sent to the printer the same day. But Mr. Murray, so after we sent the response on the fifteenth, just two days ago, sent another email. It does have quite a few questions in it. And it does start by saying that the reason the town administrator was not CC'd in my original letter, expressing my concern, having no annual report available for the voters, was to document the response time from the board.
Okay, that's fine, that's right.
And he goes on, he's got numerous questions, and he does end it.
I'm not going to respond, you know, I wouldn't even respond back to that, because.
Well, there's a lot of other questions.
What I would say is that the lateness of the audit report was beyond the town's control. This was not something that has ever happened, nor will we potty to. So that report should have been delivered in November. That's when it typically is. And had that been done, this would not have been an issue. It was not delivered until the middle of April. And we scrambled to get everything done so that we could get that report in people's hands prior to town meeting. And I believe everybody in town government did their best to get this out as quickly as possible. If we violated some law, we may have. But quite frankly, it was a, it was a very, you know, benign violation. This is not something that, and quite frankly, I think we had more than enough justification for doing what we did.
But we still had one on file for three days, so we did not.
No, I, I understand that, but.
But I, I guess what Mr. Murray doesn't understand is we were put in a situation, we could not do anything other than what we did. And.
And Tom's right, he's basing all this on the date of the upload. That's what he's questioning, what did it take from the eleventh to the twenty-third? He's basically saying, you know, we need more people to oversee the process.
Between Tom and I, I don't know how many times we talked, talked to Smith, you know, trying to get the ball rolling. We did this over and over and over. And we did what we did to get where we, well, we were lucky to get it. When we got that, we were very excited, because it was a long, drawn-out event. We don't want to have, we, we, we hope that does not happen again this year, and we, it won't, I'm sure. But I won't be addressing anything like that unless I'm in public.
So no response to this email?
That email there?
The last one, it came on the fifteenth.
Oh, no, I've already, I've already.
I think we've addressed.
Well, no, I mean, there are specific, just on his, I mean, there are specific questions in here that we have not answered.
Look, I, I think I have.
Okay.
And I stand by that response. And if there are further questions that he has, I encourage him to come to a meeting.
Okay.
These, you know.
I don't like playing these gotcha games, and that's what I feel like that, that email was. And it's, it's a very small, it's an inconvenience to everybody, we know. I mean, everybody lined up the door waiting for the town report. But it was available there, we did, and we knew that was going to be an issue, that's why we made sure it was there.
We had the one.
So we covered our tail on it, everything's good. Thank you, Mr. Murray.
Okay. What else we got?
Oh, where am I here? Okay, Richard Neal, correspondence.
So this is, I'm not sure you need to address it tonight, but I just wanted to go on record that you. to go on record that you received it. It's a letter from Mr. Neal, talking about the Lincoln School preservation, uh, maybe you can take the time to read over it, look at his request, and maybe put it on the next agenda.
Is that this?
Sure.
Okay.
It just came in today, so...
All right.
We'll put it under an old business at your next meeting, unless you want to...
Nah, I haven't read it yet, so...
So, um, next meeting will be fine?
Another thirtieth.
And, but you're good with that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
That's fine.
Commercial hauls application.
So Travis Penny, um, one of our two current commercial haulers, permit expired June thirtieth, we have the application in front of us, um, looking for a motion to approve it pending insurance.
So he's been hauling without a permit, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Do we know why?
Well, 'cause he didn't put his...
'Cause he didn't have a license.
No, it's fine.
Well, we're, we're gonna have to, you know, because honestly, why get a permit if you can run months without one? So, um, you know, I have no problem, good dude, you know, he does a service for the town of Acton, but if he's not gonna get his paperwork, or some, we, we're gonna have to, like, give him a fee or something, you know? Because, yeah, honestly, you know, if you don't register your truck and you go so many months, then you go register, you still get, you still have to pay for what you didn't register for. Um, so at some point, we're, you know, it, this gotta be more, every year we chase...
And I think that, that our superintendent has had a conversation with him, a firm conversation, 'cause we had a firm conversation, and this will not happen next year. July one, he will not be dumping, if he doesn't already have the permit. The goal is to be preact- pre, um, proactive in the first of June and get it started.
So, so you're in agreeance that if this does happen again, we'll, we'll have to give him a fee?
We'll have to put, we're gonna put something in writing prior, but yeah.
Yeah, we gotta do something.
Late fee or something?
Yeah.
Well, he just has to not be able to dump.
Yeah.
That's what it comes down to.
That's probably a, not big enough.
July one, he shouldn't be able to dump.
Yeah.
I mean, you then...
He knows that, we've talked about it.
So then we won't have to worry about a fee, it'll be new.
He wasn't gonna dump last Monday if he didn't have that paperwork.
Okay.
And I thought everything was in there, and it might have been, 'cause I make copies of everything that I get through the transfer station, I have a file up there, it might be in my paperwork up there if he just didn't get it.
So what's he missing?
Insurance.
Insurance.
Oh, that's a biggie.
I'll, I'll double check, I, I, when I leave here tonight, I'll go up and double check and see if it is in my file. If not, I will call him.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, the insurance should be the easiest thing, I mean, you call the insurance company, they can fax it, bang, done.
Yeah.
Or email it.
So I will double check my paperwork.
His insurance company should be automatically doing it, mine, mine, mine send it everywhere once a year.
Why we're on the subject of what?
Thought you could start reading.
Hauling comp- companies hauling.
Yep.
There's a number of people or individuals that are hauling trash, I believe, for a fee that we're not even aware of.
Oh, really?
So somebody needs to share that information with us, somebody share it with the superintendent.
We're gonna get it, and we're gonna...
Right. Because we only have two commercial haulers in town.
I know, I know.
Only two there, no...
I know there's some, there's been some posts on Facebook.
I'll screenshot and send it to me.
Yeah, and...
Do you know of any?
Something we need to...
All right.
Kind of get a handle on.
Yeah, we want everybody to be in the same...
Exactly. Yeah, I mean, everybody's...
We make Travis do, we make Adam do.
Why should these other people be doing it for nothing?